Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Little Rock Planning Commission, May 8, 2025. And to get this started and determine the quorum, can we get a roll call, vote please?
Yes, sir.
This is the roll call vote for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting for May 8, 2025. Commissioner Brown? Bernard?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Hurson?
Here.
Russell? Samad? Commissioner Samad?
He's wa- he's walking in, right?
Oh, he's coming in as we speak. Tremble?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Vickers?
Present.
And Commissioner Samad is walking in. For the record, let the record reflect that Commissioner Samad has arrived. We have a quorum.
Thank you. And also, just to, I did get an email or a note presumably via email. Commissioner Russell said he would be approximately fifteen minutes behind schedule, so.
Duly noted.
All right. With that being said, I'm sure that every commissioner got a chance to read the minutes. If so, I'd like to entertain a motion for the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we, the staff, read the minutes for approval?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Brown? Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell? Samad?
Yes.
Tremble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. Next item here is the, the reading of the consent agenda. Monty, if you will.
Following the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of May 8, 2025, the first group of items are on for withdrawal or deferral. Item one, file number Z-10,001,18, is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. Item number two, S-1963, is being deferred to the June 12, 2025 agenda due to further legal issues. The deferral will not be charged to the applicant. Item number six, S-1994, is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item number eight, Z-10,001,51, is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. And item number nine, Z-10,001,54, is being deferred to the July 10, 2025 agenda, so the applicant can continue to work with staff on staff's review of the application. Next are the items on consent approval. Item three, MSP-20,2502, removal of a minor arterial street extension of Capitol Hill Boulevard, south of Pride Valley Road. Staff recommends approval of the master street plan update to remove the proposed minor arterial located between the terminus of Capitol Hill Boulevard, which is a minor arterial, and the proposed principal arterial to the west. Item number four, G-23495, Canis Road, excess right-of-way abandonment, north side of Canis Road between Atkins Street and the Trumpler Street right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of the requested street right-of-way abandonment, subject to a utility easement being retained as requested by the utility companies noted in paragraph E of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number five, G-23496, East 16th Street right-of-way abandonment, approximately 181 feet of right-of-way immediately west of Boys Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested street right-of-way abandonment, subject to a utility easement being retained as noted by the utility companies in paragraph E of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number seven is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item number 10, Z-10,001,55, Lawcraft Duplex STR2s, PDC, 1724 Rice Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC rezoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Monty. We've heard the reading, the consent agenda. I'd love to entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read with the conditions noted by staff.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown? Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell? Samad?
Yes.
Tremble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you. If your item number was on the consent agenda and approved, you are more than welcome to leave at this time. If your item was moved to the regular agenda, of course, you will need to stay. We will give just a brief moment for departure. And it looks like we had one item that's on the, that was moved to the regular agenda, which is item number seven, Z-10152, as the applicant present today. If so, please make your way to the podium here, and we will have the, the reading of the item.
Item number seven, file number Z-10,001,52, is the Upper Crust Event Center, conditional use permit located at 320 West 7th Street. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow an event center at 320 West 7th. The subject property is on UU or urban use. The subject property contains a one-story building, approximately 14,925 square feet in area. The applicant notes that all functions will take place inside the building and will include the following type of events: corporate and business events, social and private celebrations, community and cultural functions, live entertainment, health and wellness events, and food and beverage events. The applicant notes that the event space is designed to be adaptable for various occasions while maintaining an upscale and professional environment. In addition, the event center will feature a private speakeasy in the rear of the building designed to provide an intimate and exclusive lounge area. The lounge will operate from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM Monday through Thursday, and from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM Fridays through Sunday. Events in the event hall of the building will be scheduled at the renter's request and end no later than 1:30 AM. However, depending on the nature of the event, the hours may be extended to 2:00 AM if necessary. The subject property, again, is zoned urban use. The zoning classification does not require off-street parking as required by code. The applicant notes that ample on-street parking is available nearby, as well as access to a parking garage, providing guests with an alternative for secure parking. Guests will not be authorized to park in the parking area located on the east side of the building, as that property is not owned by the owner of the proposed building for the event center. The applicant notes that strict security measures will be in place to ensure safety, including professional security personnel, surveillance cameras, and controlled entry policies that may include the Little Rock Police Department. The applicant states that they will work with neighboring businesses to ensure the property is cleaned following each event. Staff is supportive of the requested CUP. Staff feels the request is reasonable and appropriate for this area. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs E, N, F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report.
Thank you for the reading, Monty. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Bianca Mahomes.
All right. Ms. Mahomes, we do have one card in opposition, or representative thereof. If you'd like to speak first, you can, or you can defer your time and then come back afterwards. It's your choice.
Defer, please.
Okay. You can just have a seat right here, at the front, on one of the front seats. And we have a card here, Jeff Yates. Good afternoon. Mr. Yates?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for your time today and to all the commission. My name is Jeff Yates. I am a Little Rock real estate broker here, and I am addressing you on behalf of a client. I know that my client, Mrs. Durnley, who is the general partner of CADC, sent a letter that most of you should have received by email, raising some concerns and questions about the operations of this proposed event center. And the CADC entity fully supports downtown investment, redevelopment, and new businesses. This application has points, though, that bear clarification. And so there are some concerns and questions that I'd like to ask for you to, concerning those, those items. There is a note in the staff analysis, whereas in the applicant will be encouraged to obtain required alcohol licenses. And one of the questions is, is that going to be a requirement by any city department relative to the hours of operation? And Mr. Moore's comment that they may be extended until 2:00 AM, I'm curious about what the, the process is relative to those being extended, and if that is a, may be extended every night or any certain numbers of night? Should that be expected once a month, five times a week, that sort of thing? Particularly concerned with the reference to access to the parking garage, as my client owns the parking garage that's directly adjacent and contiguous to this property, and we know of no other parking garage that is in that vicinity. And there's been no contact or conversation relative to the use of that parking garage. My client has not agreed to the use of it and has serious concerns as the, the, the first ground, the ground level, isn't, it can't be secured as it is open today. It doesn't have gates or fences or anything like that that's open, and is currently policed or patrolled by security personnel during the day to make sure that, for the safe operation. But there's no, there's no, no process in place right now for there to be anybody there until 2:00 AM to assure the safe and orderly operation of any parking there. The desire is for there to be no parking there because of the possibility of some sort of thing occurring that could create a liability on the property owner. There's a whole myriad of things that could happen, from somebody twisting an ankle to cars being broken into or just whatever, and that, in today's litigious society, could come upon the property owner for not doing something to secure that property. As I noted earlier, it's not easily secured as it is today. It would be a great expense. And the security won't be there late at night. It's only there during the day until early evening. Then there is the, the concerns with the operation relative to the garbage and litter that might occur. The staff's analysis and comments reference the garbage pickup and has a question about trash, trash collection. My client would like to see a plan in place that would assure that the, whatever debris might be outside, trash or otherwise, could be picked up before 7:00 AM Monday through Friday for when the workers that show up to use the parking garage and the surrounding area come to work, so that the sidewalk and streets neat and orderly. Like to know where the trash pickup will be relative to any dumpsters or other enclosures, and a plan for the collection of that, that trash, when those dumpsters would be emptied, and how often. Generally, my client agrees with staff that the application is reasonable and potentially appropriate for the use for the location. Staff supports, the client supports staff's comments relative to the, the contingencies and conditions noted in paragraphs E, N, F, and the staff analysis. And CADC requested any vote by the Planning Commission also include operational requirements for the event center to present a plan for directing patrons to park only in public spaces or public, or parking spaces associated with the property, 320 West 7th Street, if any, and enforcing such parking restrictions, and that any after-event cleanup outside the event center be done no later than 7:00 AM Monday through Friday, and that a trash disposal plan, including minimum pickup schedule and location of dumpsters, be provided. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Yates here. We may have some questions for you.
Thank you.
Afterwards, or one of the commissioners. At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Mahomes to come back up here. And the floor will be yours. I mean, the opposition did have several different questions. I don't know if you wrote them down, but there are some concerns on that, and feel free to address those as well. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. I wrote down where you said about the alcohol permit. We are in the process of obtaining an alcohol permit from ABC, of course, after the hearing, so we will do that correctly. The hours of operations, we do plan to have a 12:00 AM close time every night, but this is an event space, and so whatever the client wants, if they need a longer time, we are extending those hours. Our garbage pickup plan, we do have trash bins in our shed area of the building, and we plan on putting those out there for a Monday pickup. In reference to the parking garage, we do have different parking measures. Parking has been addressed with nearby options. The east side of the building, we will have a park at your own risk. We will recommend that people don't park there. If your parking garage is off limit, is at limits as well, we won't recommend them to park there. There's a best park, parking lot down the street in front of First Methodist Church, as well as Ample Street Parking. We do have measures in place to pick up after each event. That's a responsibility on us. That's a part of our cleanup tasks. And we do plan to have our relationships with Little Rock Police Department, Palassee County Sheriff's Office, as well as our own personal security guards that will help us with the cleanup duties as well. I heard you say something about safety as well. We take safety seriously as well. All events and lounge hours will have trained security staff, and entry will be closely monitored. We also will install security cameras so that we can make sure that everyone is safe and coordinate with local law enforcement to maintain a safe environment for guests and neighbors. I think I answered everything. Any other questions, I guess?
Well, yeah, you can direct it up here to the
Oh, I'm sorry.
Board here. Before I open it up to the commissioners for questions or comments on this, I kind of want you to expound more about, you know, parking, because there are incidents that we've had in the past downtown, which ended in some drastic measures years back. And we want to, we want the city to, you know, move forward, be very progressive. But at the same time, you know, our citizens is one of the first priorities, I know, not just for this board, but the city board, is safety. And we do consider safety first. How are those measurements taking, when you talk about, when I say parking, but also talk about, uh, uh, security? You said you would have security and working in opposition with Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office?
Little Rock PD.
And Little Rock PD. I was reading here, how big is the space that you're occupying here?
The space? The total building is 14,000 square feet, but we're going to occupy 10,000.
Okay. So it's a total of 14,925 square feet, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And out of that, you're occupying basically over two-thirds, about 10,000 square feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how many officers will you have on staff at your events?
That'll depend on the nature of the events. Are smaller events, we want to have at least two. Bigger events, we'll have at least four.
Okay. Now, how do you define smaller, and how do you define bigger?
So like, one officer, every?
And a numerical standpoint. Is small 10, and is big 20, or more? I'm just, I'm trying to understand that.
I'm thinking small as in 50 to 100, big as in 100 to 150.
Okay. So with, with
Alongside of our personal security, sorry.
So how many personal security do you have?
Normally, I have two officers, two.
Two officers. So on a small event from 50 to 100, how much additional officers do you, will you have in your policy?
So 50 to 100 will be two police officers and then two personal security.
So a total of four for small events?
Correct.
And for big events, 100, 100 to 150 or more, how many officers internally and hired?
Two at the door and then four on the outside.
Okay. So a total of six?
Correct.
Okay. All right. At this time, I want to open the floor up to any of the commissioners. Any questions, comments, statements? Commissioner person, go ahead.
So this is, um, this is currently an event space?
Mm-hmm.
Already. It's, I'm getting two different answers. Well, if it's not
It's a theater.
It's a theater, um, the studio.
That also has events. So this is a space that is also used as an event space?
It was a theater, and they allowed us to have events there.
Okay. Has there been any issues since events have been, have been happening there?
No.
Okay. That's all, of course, I got. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Did I understand you to say that you would have outside security?
Correct. The polices are normally on the outside of our events, and then we have two personal security guards on the inside of the event.
And I know you said you would recommend that people not park in the parking deck Mr. Yates mentioned, but would one of those people be there to tell people not to? Would you have somebody stationed there, or some sign that says, "Do not park here"?
Sure. Yes.
Would that be on the, her responsibility, or would that be on the owner of the parking garage?
Well, it's, it's her people that she's telling not to park there, so it seems to me she should be responsible for that.
Was that all?
Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
No, sir. I just want to record to reflect that Commissioner Russell has arrived.
Thank you. Yes, for the record. Welcome, Commissioner Russell.
Yep. And I just have a quick comment. I'm, I'm familiar with this project and, and the opposition against it, so I'm glad I got here in time. There is a bar that is open until like 2:00 AM on the same block as this, uh, this application, with no issues with parking, with no issues with crime, or really any of the other, uh, items of opposition that have come up against this application, so.
Good to think, thank you.
Yeah, just going to ask a quick question. Mr. Yates, is your client interested or, or open for collaborating and opening up parking, even if it were on a, a paid basis? Seems like that could be a nice little income opportunity. And obviously, when we have tenants and landlords and people working together downtown, I ultimately feel that everyone benefits. So what are your, what are your clients' thoughts on that?
And please come to the podium, Mr. Yates.
Yes, sir. I have been given no direction on any sort of agreement with the, for parking, leasing or otherwise, but I do know from other opportunities with this property that they would be open to such a discussion. And having some sort of a written agreement would very much be appreciated relative to addressing the concerns of, of parking. To Mr. Russell's point, at this time, there have been no known issues with parking at that garage, and the property owner would like to see it stay that way, not knowing how big these events might be, or where they might be parking otherwise. The property owner's concerned with overflow into the parking garage and the potential liabilities that come with that. So having an agreement between the parties would be beneficial to both.
Ask your question. Good. All right.
Thank you.
Could we make that a condition of the approval?
What, the condition as far as?
Having an agreement between the parties?
That both parties, if they have a conditional agreement with parking?
Yes, sir. To, to Commissioner Baxter's question, I'm just asking, is that, is that a condition of approval?
Well, I mean, that would be, that would be constituted on the applicant. Would that be correct, Brad, if I can get you all in here, or maybe for Sean? Sean, is that something that we can, can we mandate that?
Well, that, that, I feel very uncomfortable with that. We would not, need to know the exact condition, and you're starting to get into private agreements between private citizens. And, I mean, certainly placing the applicant on notice that there's potentially an issue with using the parking garage, I think is about as far as this commission can go. Do you have signs up that says?
There are, there is signage on the property, yes, sir, Mr. Overton. And, and, and that's, you've answered the question. Commissioner Baxter had raised the issue, and I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
The city would have no way to enforce that.
Yes, sir.
And even if, if the, the applicant made an agreement, she certainly can't control what citizens do in the city of Little Rock in regards to parking. Now, I do think you said you made a commitment to have a security guard or someone standing out there. And I trust that she would do that. But as far as the city requiring that, as far as this application, I think that would be taking it too far.
And I'm not asking it to be, not asking for it to be requirement, I'm asking if, if Commissioner Baxter's point was going to be part of that requirement.
No, I, I think I understand that. We can mandate it.
Right.
And, and I appreciate this, and I want to bring Ms. Mahomes back up to the podium because she needs to answer this.
Thank you.
As the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Yates. Please come back up to the podium. Obviously, we cannot mandate that or require that, but, you know, we can encourage if you did have a conversation, you know, with the property owner, or in this case, the garage owner with that at your discretion. You know, I think it's always a good habit for both entities to kind of know each other, understand each other, especially if they're going to be operating in the same or similar location to, or adjacent to. With that being said, now, obviously, we, we can't do that, but we would encourage that, Ms. Mahomes, if you will. I think that'd be just a good practice overall.
I just, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
So in the application, it does say something about access to the parking garage. So I guess that's the main dispute that the opposition has. So I was wondering if it, is that we, that should be removed from the actual, that language, does that need to be removed, or is that fine to be there? Because in here, it says that specifically.
It's an option for parking. Yeah.
Um, it says that on page seven. It says, "The applicant notes that ample on-street parking is available nearby, as well as access to a parking garage." So does that just need to be removed, or does it, can it stay? If this is approved, I just wanted to make sure, just for the sake of clarification.
Yeah, we, Commissioner, we can strike it from the report, but as I'm hearing, there may be some sort of private agreement after this. I think the applicant has, has stated in, in public that they'll dissuade people from parking there. What happens after this meeting with, you know, between two private property owners is, is their, their business. But we can, we can strike it from But we can, we can strike it from the, the report, as it's not part of it now, as the, the property owner has stated that they're not on board with it.
Okay.
But just to piggyback off of what Commissioner McDonald said, if we, even if we omit that from the application, we can do that in the motion where we do admit it, but if they want to have their own private agreement, then we can, obviously, they can do that, right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, right. Okay. Any other questions or statements for, for the applicant? If not, I would love to entertain a, a motion that includes the language that Commissioner McDonald stated.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation of the requested conditional use permit, file number Z-10152, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs E and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report and the modifications that Commissioner McDonald suggested.
All right. We have a motion and a second. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
Bernard? Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Tremble?
Yeah.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
All right. Thank you very much, applicant. Your motion was approved. Thank you. And we definitely look forward to seeing this place and, and thriving and bringing more commerce and moving the city forward in a, in a great and a safe format. All right. Thank you. All right. Do we have any other, any new business to discuss?
All right.
Any public comments?
Yes.
Any statements from any of the commissioners?
Is the other application removed?
Yes.
All right. If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.